And things and my dad's like, I'm just waiting for you to bring out the orange cones around.
My cousin next door.
Or by water. It was a little bit maybe over the top.
He was just here today and he had his collar off and that's a really friendly dog loves people. Like day when he has his.
Yeah, we got you folks. Good to see.
Yeah, no.
I'm not sure. I was just about asking. I missed that one because the first whenever there's a meeting on the first Thursday, on the first Thursday falls on the first, I always forget to go up to the second meeting.
Ready? Marola? We'll call to order the Gladstone City Commission meeting of April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one. Rule call.
Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Akala.
Here.
Commissioner Mantala.
Here.
Commissioner Stazinski.
Here.
And we have one vacancy.
First up, we have a public hearing for appropriation ordinance number six eighteen for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Yep, this is required by our charter each year to to do ordinance on the expenditures of the general fund. If you look at the budget with that we approved, these numbers all add up to four million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars, just like in the budget.
Any discussion before I open up the public hearing? Open up the public hearing at six oh two? Anybody that would like to comment could please step. Pardon?
That's the presentation.
Yes, we've already covered this several times in meetings, so. We all know we are, but please.
I don't know who he is.
For the record.
I don't know who he is.
Five twenty-six Minnesota Avenue. I live on the corner. My neighbor just informed me recently, we had some roadwork done. His, he was part of the nice street project and his sewer didn't get hooked up. We were all amazed. Oh, except him. He had sewer in his basement for a while. Alright, so I noticed with the the total cost. Eric, what, four, four point two million?
Four point three.
Four point three. The taxation is one point six. And so the difference is. What do I do with my pencil? Well, more than two million dollars. So where does that money come from?
You have your revenue sharing.
Okay, the sales tax, that's three hundred thousand.
And.
We've got money from charter, the franchise fee.
Yep.
Sixty thousand.
There's two forms of revenue sharing. I, I don't have my budget in front of me.
Okay, and then the DDA, they take out a hundred and sixty thousand from the one point six million. So actually that goes down. So the franchise fee covers sixty of that. So if we put the sales tax in at three hundred, we're up, what, two hundred? Okay, so we're still, well, I guess because we're still four plus, we're still two million, two million dollars to be figured out what it is.
Is there Act fifty-one money in there?
Well, Act fifty-one money should not go for the roads.
There's no Act fifty-one, but there's the profit sharing and then there's the administrate administrative fees that are charged to the different franchise funds.
To the enterprise funds?
Yeah.
And that information's waiting for me somewhere, I guess. You're working on it?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Is that, is that back there for me?
Nope, it was in the mail today.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so two million dollars is charged to the enterprise funds then, or a million? It just seems like that there's just.
I don't have the, I don't have the numbers you have in front of you, so I can't.
I've got a piece of paper that was for the meeting notice. I thought there'd be more of an explanation, you know, for a presentation. We had several meetings on the breakdown of all this.
Okay, so it should be fresh in everybody's mind then, I guess. I wasn't here because of.
I don't know that anybody up here memorizes the budget, but.
Well, we're talking about two million dollars.
Yep, and we, we can definitely find out where that comes from, but.
I think you've answered my question, Joe. You're gonna find out where it comes from.
Well, I don't, I, I wouldn't expect anybody up here would know that right off the top of their head. I don't know if anybody else does, but I sure wouldn't.
Well, I'm just wondering where, where the revenue comes from. We're looking at two million, so if you just came up with some more ideas where it comes from. I know revenue sharing, but I'm not sure how much that is. Are we talking a hundred thousand, two hundred, three? But I. I'll go with what you said, Joe. We'll, I'll just come back and I'll talk to Eric and we'll figure out where this comes from.
It's in the past meeting minutes and stuff. We've had presentations on the budget. You know, everything's been always included in those packets. It should all be there. We didn't make these numbers up, I'm sure of that.
Well, no, I'm just wondering where the money comes from. So that's, that's what I'm saying is, I know what the, I know the expenses because they're right here. So I'm sure this is to the penny, or at least to the dollar. I'm just wondering what the offset is as far as coming in because the tax levy is one point six. So I mean, that's taxes only cover half of what it costs to operate the city. I mean, the, the, the property taxes don't even cover what, what public safety is. Public safety is one point seven and, you know, all the property taxes is one point six. So I mean, that's, there's a lot of ground to make up.
It's, it's like that pretty much year in, year out.
Okay, well, I guess I'm wondering more where it's coming from. But I'll, I'll talk with Eric later. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Not, not now, I mean, you know, down.
No, I was just wondering why you didn't come to the budget hearings when we had them, because we went over every line item, every detail of that.
Those were all online?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I'm not an online person. So as you can tell from the last meeting. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks. Any other public comment? We'll close the public hearing then at six oh seven. Just looking for a motion to approve.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance six eighteen.
Support.
Have a motion by Commissioner Mantala, support by Commissioner Akala. We have a rule call.
Sure. Commissioner Mantala?
Yes.
Commissioner Stazinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Akala?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
The motion is approved. Next up on the agenda, we have the, and we have public comment. Anybody would like to publicly comment? We'll move on to the consent agenda. The city commission.
Sorry, Joey, I sneaked up on you. It happens. It's like Mexican food.
I am getting older.
See, I've got glasses now too, so. Anyways, unfortunately, Commissioner Hunter could not be with us. But a few meetings ago, I called in and we had a small discussion concerning the electric fund. And he said that the rates were based on the outcomes from the consultant, UFS Consultants. And I was, and he had made some mention that it said in there that the rates had to go up. Well, I'm looking at page seven of the of the findings of UFS. And there's, I get it in colors. There's pink and green. I'm sure you've seen this for the presentation. The green is projected cash balances. And with projected rate adjustments of zero for the next five years, we're still in the green. There's no need to raise electric rates for the next five years. So why would the city commission raise the rates? It wasn't warranted. In addition, there's a surplus of cash in the in the fund. Right now it stands at about, the treasurer would know more. I'm going by what these numbers are. I'm gonna say it's two million dollars. The recommended minimum cash is a million. That means there's a million dollars more that the electric fund has collected than is needed. And that money should go back to the rate payers. You know what I mean, Joe? Okay, so is there a way that you can give a million dollars back to the citizens? And get this back in line with, with what is actually here with the.
We can, we can look back at, at the presentations that we had from UFS. My, my recollection of that is they, they were the ones that established what we should raise the rates, the rate we should raise the rates at, which we are following the recommendations. They didn't recommend us not to raise rates.
Well, then it says projection without rate change. We're still in the green.
Yeah, I'm.
I know what they said will generate an extra one point five million dollars in the electric fund. And this is the contention I had last time with Commissioner Hunter was three hundred thousand dollars was transferred out of the electric fund to the general fund. Hey, that makes up some of that difference. And how is it gonna be paid back? It should not lower the electric rates. If we have too much money in electrical fund, rates should go down.
Who should pay for the administration of all the electric bills and all that stuff? That's supposed to be done for free. There's not supposed to be any.
Well, right here, it's got projected revenues. I'm sure you've seen the study. Projected revenues and what it's gonna, what the expenses and the revenues.
The, the transfer to the general fund though is to cover billing, other things.
It's in here. All of that is in here. It's a complete and full study. I guess you didn't listen to Mr. Hunter. This is the full and complete study. It has all the expenses and revenues. This is it. This is the summary page and it shows there's two million dollars in the fund. It only needs a million. And yes, there are operating costs that are passed on from the general fund to the electric fund to water. Understand that. And I think we're working on those numbers. But that's taken care of in here. So there's still more money in the electric fund than is needed.
I don't.
And the electric fund is not a bank, by the way.
When you were commissioner, you were worried that we didn't have enough because Esconaba just lost a substation.
Yes, exactly. Yes.
Yes.
When I was a commissioner, I went down to WPPI and I said, how much would it cost to replace the transformer, to get a portable in, to get a mobile in for the period of time? And could we run, run on one transformer? Because my concern was, we have two transformers. If one goes out, can we live on one? And no one knew the answer. I was shocked. So I went down to WPPI and they were very nice to say yes. And they actually had the load studies for Gladstone to prove it. So yeah, we need money to pay for stuff.
Yeah.
And this is what the studies came up with. I'm, I'm just going by what I was told by Hunter is, we're following what's here. So that's what I expect. Is that too much to ask?
The electric actually had, had two studies. They had WPPI study and, and that study. And so the, the two have been sort of intermingled together, but they're, they're really close. But.
Okay, but this is what you're gonna go by.
Okay.
Correct?
Again, we had a presentation, we had all these documents out and you didn't show up for the presentation. You come afterwards.
Luckily it was, luckily it was writ. It's, it's writ, it's black and white. Or, or red and green.
We don't have that in front of us right now.
Right, but, but you're aware of what it was because you were all here for the presentation.
I'd have to look back. We, we, we actually had it up on the wall there and they showed us projecting out what we would need to do to make sure that we had things covered as they came up.
Yes, I'm sure, I'm sure they did.
We did with.
I'm saying that, that there was so much extra money in the electoral fund that the general fund came and took three hundred thousand dollars. How are you gonna pay it back?
How the general fund, the, the utilities pay administration?
Yes, but three hundred and ten thousand dollars was taken out as a loan to buy trucks. This should have been paid out of the general fund, correct? And that's we pay back at a rate of thirty thousand dollars a year.
Also, going back to when you were commissioner, you wanted to pay off the MERS with the electric funds.
Uh, no, I didn't. No, no.
Yes, you did. You said that at a meeting.
No, what I said is, if we're gonna play this game where electric rates can be whatever it should be, we don't need property taxes. We'll just raise the electric rates. That was the issue then. What I said for MERS was, what we should do is bond for MERS because we could bond and get money at two or three percent and put that into MERS. And if you look back over the, you know, what MERS made over the last five years, we would have MERS totally covered. The retirement for our employees would be secure. Instead, we're still in that same mode, you know, year to year, are we gonna make it? And I would like to make it secure for the employees. I mean, they deserve that, don't you think?
So that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Exactly. Okay.
But it'd be nice if you'd come to these meetings when they happen instead of coming a year later and nitpick. So you're doing.
You know.
It was, it was a long time ago that we have these presentations from.
Yes, well, probably as you know, I did have a heart attack and, you know, the COVID thing. So I've been pretty much closed out, but I, I promise to come to all the future meetings.
Good.
So we'll, we'll work forward.
Mike, did, did you bring, did you bring the whole study or did you bring just page seven?
Oh, just page seven.
No, it was page seven you had?
Yeah, I've got the rest of it in the office if you'd like to see all of it.
Well, I've, I've got a copy of it too and.
I think it was presented on June eighth, twenty twenty?
Right, so as I recall in the presentation, they did have projections if, of with our rates, with our current rates, projections, like a five-year projection, where we'd be at. And if you had page eight or nine, it would have a projection of where we'd be at if we raised the rate to a certain amount.
Oh, yes, yeah. Page eight basically says, raise the raise, and what you're gonna do is generate another one point five million dollars to go into the electrical fund. And what the recommended minimum cash is, is about a million. And now you'd be up around three point five million.
So, so the projection that they had with the increased rate?
Is gonna be, there's gonna be more money in the electrical fund.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
So the, the projection they had on a pages you didn't bring that show the increased rate and it shows an increased balance, the fund balance? And it was based upon anticipated capital improvement projects that the system is gonna need. So, you know, if you want to discuss this, that'd be great.
They were not detailed in this extensive report that covered everything.
Yeah, when I was speaking, I'd appreciate if you'd stop and listen.
I'm sure those documents are here somewhere.
And not interrupt me.
No, I'm sorry.
That's three times. So if you'd like to discuss this and you'd like to look at the details of it, I'd be happy to sit down and look at the, the whole study. But you can't bring one page of the study and say that this explains and, and demonstrates that we're doing something that wasn't recommended. We went with the recommended rates that they had projected out for five years based upon capital improvements that were gonna need to be done. And it's all in that study. We can't cherry pick one page and come here and say the city is not following the recommendations that were suggested.
I would be happy to meet with you anytime you would like to.
Give me a call.
Okay.
I got a card up front. If you need my number.
Are you at your office ever?
Kinda in and out.
Better call you.
It'd be better to call.
Okay, I'll call. We'll get together. You know where I'm at.
Yep.
We'll have coffee across the street.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Any other public comment? Moving on to the consent agenda, the city commission regular meeting minutes of April twelfth, twenty twenty-one and the payment of bills.
I just had a quick question. The Wilderness Park Walkway. That is for. Where is that again?
That is the asphalt portions of the boardwalk that were washed out from the high water.
Oh, okay, gotcha. The boardwalk, okay. I just didn't, I.
I had to do it, I had to do a.
Wilderness Park Walkway didn't register with me.
I had to do a double take too. I thought Wilderness Park, that's in Wells Township. What's that?
Okay.
That is actually, the campground is called Wilderness Park, so.
Okay, I'm, now I know. Yeah, we had a lot of discussion on that and so.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes.
I would make the motion that we award the nine thousand dollar bid estimate to Gary Johnson Construction for the Wilderness Park Walkway.
We're looking for a motion to approve the, it's part of the payment of bills and.
Yes.
Yep.
We have a motion by Commissioner Akala.
Who's support?
Support by Commissioner Stazinski. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Next up under new business, we have the water plant masonry repairs and painting bids.
Rob Sprite, sir, Water Superintendent. This project is one that needs to be done. Our building is in need of masonry repairs and recoating. Last time it was done was in two thousand and then in twenty thirteen, we had some more major concrete repairs done. This past January, we had approval from the commission to use the services of Coleman Engineering to come up with the spec and take care of the bidding process. A couple of weeks ago, we had the bid opening. We only received two bids. One from Saint Germain Sand Blasting of McGawney and one from Greenstone Polymers of Green Bay. Saint Germain Sand Blasting was in the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And Greenstone Polymer Systems was in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars. However, Greenstone Palmer did not meet some of the requirements of the, the bidding process. Along with, they tried to change some of the things in the bidding process. If they were to get the bid, they wanted fifty percent down at the start of the project. They were also requesting the city furnish them with a dumpster. Were in the, the bidding guidelines, it was specked out with the contractors responsible for all cleanup necessary for the project. The other thing that had us concerned was there were four items in the pay item descriptions. And when it came to mortar joint repair, Greenstone was considerably less than Saint Germain. And I believe they had it worded in their proposal about having it in there that major concrete defects, structural repair would be time enough materials. With approval by the city of Gladstone invoiced as add-ons, that kind of looked to us like potential change orders. So we would like to ask for the bid to go to Saint Germain. Do you have any other questions that I can't answer? Kevin Trevillion from Coleman Engineering is here as well.
Rob, in your opinion, then the, the potential for those change orders to go over the difference of twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars is significant, correct?
Yeah. Also, I know that it was in the bid documents that contractors were, I believe, highly recommended to stop on site and look over the facility. I know that representative, kind of representing Greenstone, was at the plant probably almost two years ago when they just kinda gave it the look over. Kinda threw a quote at us. Saint Germain caught wind of the project this summer when they were there doing our tank. So I know those guys really went over the building well. I know they were taking paint samples. They were looking at, there was some damage up on the third floor by one of the lintels in the doorway, a few other places. So I know that they were really familiar with the structure.
And no one from Greenstone's been there in two years?
It's been about almost two years.
Almost two years.
And at that time, it was just kind of a vote for coating. That was the last that we had heard. It really wasn't a, a Greenstone rep. Kevin, maybe you can enlighten us a little bit more on the relationship between Greenstone and TCR. Was actually a rep for TCR. TCR is a company that has done water or done work for the water department in the past. They do do good work. We fused them for, back in twenty thirteen for the more major concrete structural repairs on the building.
And they didn't bid this time?
They, they kinda did through Greenstone.
Okay.
The memo I received from TCR was, hey, we're booked up, but this is kind of who we're going through to get this work done. Was that kind of how it was?
Yeah, I think TCR is actually a concrete restoration specialist. So it's a sort of a loose arm of TCR.
The bottom line is Greenstone didn't meet the requirements of the bid, the bid requirements, did they? So that'd be, to me, that's too open-ended.
What's Greenstone specialty? Does, does this kinda work?
Yes, this is.
And Saint Germain, are they, are you familiar with any of their work?
Saint Germain is a very reputable, longstanding, major contractor. Done a lot of his work, at least by all restoration qualifications.
And their bid was complete with all the, they met all the specifications?
So they've got really a not-to-exceed bid?
Mm-hmm. And we had budgeted a hundred and twenty-eight for this, right?
Yeah, a hundred and twenty-eight and five.
Five, okay. I would make a motion to accept the bid from Saint Germain Sand Blasting for the painting and masonry repair at the water treatment plant for one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll support. We have a bid, or we have a motion by Commissioner Mantala, support by myself to accept the Saint Germain bid for one hundred and sixteen thousand, five fifty. I think it looks like the, like a strong choice. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Thanks, Rob. Thanks. Next, we have a development, development and maintenance revocable license, Waterview Apartments One, Limited Dividend Housing Association.
Back before the commission passed the ordinance in September, Commissioner Hunter and myself, we were working with, with the company, the Waterview Apartments, one company, the developers. It's it's sort of complicated now that they have the RAD arrangement where you're not working with the, it's called RAD. That's what the federal program is and it's actually a private developer works with the housing commission to, to make the needed improvements to a building. And so this company that has, that was awarded the bid to do to do the improvements. Said financially using, because of the amount of work needed to be done, they requested to have their pilt lowered from ten to four percent. And we, in looking at our other state subsidized housing unit that we have up on the bluff and part down on, down in town, the other ones were paying four percent. So that ten percent goes back to the, I think it was the late nineteen sixties when they originally put Fairview in. So we.
So we we dropped it. The commission voted for it to be dropped, and at the same time, the developer said in order to make the the city so it wasn't a losing proposition, they they wanted to have an agreement to it's hard to word because you have to legally word it, but an agreement with the right away that's there, that they're going to be improvement, proving. And if you look at the at the Bayview Manor, we would be losing about two thousand dollars a year in pilt money. And there, in the agreement, they agreed to pay us thirty thousand, which it would cover the fifteen years times two thousand is thirty thousand, so.
I remember when we discussed this, that my concern was that it wasn't a financial hit to the city. And I think when you had to explain it and worked it all out, it was basically, it worked out to the same fiscal effect for the city, but the way it was paid worked out. They liked the way the payment worked out better that way. But overall, over the fifteen years, the, it was a net zero law for the city.
And Renee and I worked with Miller Canfield and the developers and I think the developer's attorney. And of course, there were some words they didn't like and some words that we didn't like. We just wanted everything to be, so it was it was legal, and so that's what we have before us right now.
So this license was reviewed by Miller Canfield also?
Yes. It's in exchange for a non-exclusive revocable license to improve and maintain the unvacated and unimproved portion of Bird Street, the budding lots forty, forty-one, forty-three. You know, I didn't come up with that language.
No, no doubt.
Are they extending Bird Street out to Minneapolis, then?
Yes, what the, what's gonna, it's actually, they're going to be using Bird Street as as a driveway to get to the apartments. So no permanent structure will be put over it or anything, but they're at.
Oh, yeah, at the Dakota end, right, and then and then they're gonna, they're gonna put like a maintenance shed or something over at the, towards the Minneapolis end, if I remember correctly?
Yeah.
One forty-three, yeah.
Let's see, the other language in here that's important, the developer. This is a fifteen-year, non-exclusive, revocable license. Developer shall be solely responsible for improving Bird Street. They can't do any improvements without prior written consent of the city, so we're not gonna get a gazebo or something built right in the middle of Bird Street. Developer shall indemnify, defend, and hold harmless the city and its elected appointed officials. There will be no further disclaim for any intended third-party beneficiaries to the licensee other than the holder of the mortgage loan. And a wa, any waiver on any of these provisions must be in writing and signed by both parties. And neither party shall be permitted to assign their interest in this agreement. Anybody have any questions?
And make a motion for the mayor and the clerk to authorize the agreement, development and maintenance revocable license agreement.
No support. Motion by Commissioner Mantala, support by Commissioner Stazinski, to authorize signatures. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Next up, we have the K nine vehicle purchase, upfitting and decals.
Rod Robinson, Public Safety, what you have in front of you is a staff report. For the purchase of a K nine vehicle, the upfitting of that vehicle and putting decals on it. What we're looking at is a twenty twenty-one Dodge Durango V six all-wheel drive. The quote through my deal is thirty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars plus two dollars a mile for delivery. It should be noted that we already put in order for this vehicle, because when I called for an updated quote on April fifth, they said we had until April eighth. They actually put the order in. So the order was already put in. Again, that's the my deal contract is law on tape. The Durango is going to purchase or replace our current K nine cruiser, which is a twenty fourteen Ford Intercepter with approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles on it. So it's been in service for a while. I did receive some quotes on other vehicles, including another Ford, but we felt that the Dodge was going to be better suited for what we need, and it fits our budget a lot better. The upfitting, I got two quotes for the upfitting, which is the installation of all the equipment in the cruiser. I attempted to get up there, but never heard back. You can see Elcom came in at like twelve thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars, but that's with a new radio, which I kind of looked at getting at that time. So even if you take the radio, it's still around nine thousand dollars. Truck equipment came in at like seventy-five hundred dollars. The decal-ing, we always do at Meyer Signs, that's roughly six hundred and fifty dollars. This is a budgeted purchase for this fiscal year. We budgeted forty thousand dollars from our K nine donations for this purchase. My recommendation would be is to purchase the twenty twenty-one Dodge Durango when it comes in, have truck equipment do the upfitting upon arrival, and have Meyer Signs do the decals.
Are you gonna use an old radio, or are you gonna get, just have somebody put that radio in for three thousand?
We don't have the funds. First, we don't have the funds in the K nine donations for a new radio, so.
Okay.
The radio we have in there now is, it's still a mold roll, it's still functional, it's obsolete. So the recommendation is to replace it sooner than later, but again, we don't have the funds in the K nine donations at this time.
Have we had truck equipment, outfit vehicles before?
Nope, this will be the first time. It actually came through Tiger, through our mechanic. He's dealt with them before, and they actually came up here last summer, and they did a walk-through of their apartment, looked at all our cruisers, and basically gave their little promotion here as far as what they can do. They do a lot of upfitting down in the Wisconsin area, including the Green Bay and all those surrounding areas, but it will be the first time that we use them.
Did they give a lead time, a turnaround time on what that would take? I know that's, sometimes that can take a while.
Well, you know, to get the cruiser usually takes about three months. To actually get the upfitting, it varies, you know. Upfitting is kind of the problem we have with our department, because there's not a lot of places that do them around here.
Sure.
You know, we used to use a guy out of Safingus, who I reached out to, does a good job, but it always varies, because, you know, you gotta order the consoles, you gotta order the cages. A lot of it is based on those manufacturers when you can actually get that equipment. So to answer your question, I don't have a lead time as far as when they'll get all that equipment. The twenty twenty-one Dodge Durango is, again, that's going to be new to us. The twenty twenties actually had the shifter in the, not on the column, but where we usually put our center console. So we kind of stayed away from the twenty twenties, you know, because that's where we put our radios and everything. Based on, you know, departments giving their recommendations, they put the shifter on the column now in twenty twenty. So the Durango is going to be new to us, too. You know, we looked at the Ford, which we drive right now, but that price has went up significantly since I started purchasing those vehicles. When I first started purchasing those, they were like thirty-two thousand, now they're thirty-nine thousand.
Wow.
It's went up quite a bit.
Yes, you're looking at almost a two thousand dollar difference between Elcom and truck equipment.
Yeah, truck equipment's been, you know, I, nothing against Elcom, we've had them upfit our cars. Truck equipment's been really good. They've had phone contact with me constantly. You know, I feel that their quote was really good, so.
Over two thousand dollars, too. I mean, if they're, you know, if they've, they've kind of want the business and.
Right. I just talked to the guy at Truck Equipment a couple of days ago, and he said the only thing that they're probably gonna have to wait for is the push bummer. He didn't have a deadline on that when he would get it, so. That's one of the things, when you get a new, a new cruiser, you never know when you're gonna, you know, it takes a while for the cruiser to come in, and then the parts for it. You know, you can sit on it for six months before you actually get it in service.
This has the special door for Cam to get out, because it's too hot.
It will. I mean, you're gonna see in the next staff report that the K nine cruiser is a little bit less than the one I'm gonna propose next, just because we don't need the vinyl seats in the K nine car, we don't need two spotlights, because what happens with that K nine cruiser, they take the backseat out anyway, and they put that kennel in there. You know, that separates the passenger, the prisoner, whatever you want to call it, and the dog, so you don't need that vinyl backseat. Which saved a little bit of cost to the K nine car. I was actually looking at the K nine cruiser one first.
When you get a vehicle for, you know, for police use, do you get the same warranty that the general public gets?
Yeah.
You do, okay.
Are these pursuit rated? Do they have like heavier brakes?
They are, they're pursuit rated. Yep, they're pursuit rated.
Better tires and stuff.
Yep.
Would the plan, would the plan be to sell Cruiser sixty-seven then?
Yep, we always sell our cruisers, put it on a bid, and then that money goes back into our car fund. Every year, we budget, as you guys know, we budget a little bit, and we put it into that car fund for future cruisers. So if you're looking for a car, we should have full fill.
And it's all set up for dogs?
Well, no. You left a dog here in it.
I'd make a motion to approve the purchase and upfitting as detailed for the Dodge Durango, truck equipment upfitting, and Meyer Signs decals. I added up, I think it came to thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-three. Does that sound about right?
Yep.
I'd make that motion.
No support that.
And one, one quick question, too, on the K nine donations. What was the total donations we received from that?
It was over sixty thousand, or sixty-five thousand.
Nice.
Yeah, that's incredible.
They're still coming in, too, or anything?
Yeah, it's like, you know, you always hear the excuse COVID, but COVID did kind of shut us down. We had some, you know, donation seeking events in mind and stuff, but again, with COVID, we weren't able to. We've been running through, we're looking at doing something on the Fourth of July, you know, your presentation, I think Commissioner Mantle had mentioned that before, which was a great idea, so. Hopefully, we can start getting back out there in the community.
Are you gonna participate in the one that DND is doing on the trivia?
Yes, 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 we are.
I tell you, that's, that's an incredible amount of money out of a city of less than five thousand people.
Oh, yeah, we're very grateful.
What a community. Great response. Makes me probably live here, things like that, you know, it really does.
So we have motion by Commissioner Mantala, support by Commissioner Stazinski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Jump right into the next public safety vehicle.
Again, it's pretty much the same as the one we just covered, but we're looking at replacing Cruiser number sixty, again, with the twenty twenty-one Dodge Durango. As you can see, the quote on that, just a regular patrol car came in at thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars plus the two dollars a mile for delivery. That car is going to replace a twenty sixteen Ford Intercepter Utility with about a hundred and four thousand miles on it. Again, the upfitting, received two quotes, saw it a third, but never heard back. Again, your quote with a radio is, you know, twelve thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight through Elcom. Truck equipment, I didn't do a radio, because I was still kind of trying to decide. They came in at like sixty-eight hundred dollars. Again, Meyer Signs is six fifty for decals. So again, not, not much difference. Again, we needed, you know, the vinyl seats in the back of this cruiser. Recommendation would be is to purchase that twenty twenty-one Dodge Durango when it comes in, have truck equipment do the upfitting, Meyer Signs do the decals, and based on all that final price, I would like to get the, a new APX forty-five hundred radio for it.
Is, so the way, the way I have it presented right now, it's thirty-nine thousand, five oh eight?
Yes.
And you'd look to get the radio for, was it thirty-three?
The radio, yeah, three thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. I will caution you, I mean, a lot of this is, you know, with the vehicles is, you can get the quotes, but they always seem to be either they come in lower, they come in a little bit higher. That's why I put approximately, you know, the four years I've been doing this, I always notice that it's, they can give you a quote, but then it's always, well, something came up and it costs a little bit more, so. Those are approximate. We budgeted forty-five thousand for this, so there's
Okay.
There's plenty of wiggle room in there, but I just, I didn't want to say.
Yeah, even with the radio comes, I, I came up with forty-two, eight forty.
Right.
So there's still.
There's still some.
That's with the radio, so.
Yes, that's with the radio, yeah.
Now, does this rate, does this cruiser have the same radio as the current K nine unit?
It does. Yes.
Okay, they're the same.
Yeah, I've only replaced one radio so far with the APX forty-nine hundreds.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the public safety patrol vehicle.
Support.
Motion by myself, support by Commissioner Mantala.
Is that with the radio?
With the radio.
Okay, yeah, support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Next up, we have the American Rescue Plan Act information.
Okay, last week, Vicki and I got a letter from Mr. Rod Taylor. He's our contact at Treasury. Anyway, everybody has heard about the American Rescue Plan Act that Congress passed. This is COVID money that's going right to the communities. Adam, could you put that slide up? Look at page two, you can see this is how much money that Congress is sending out to the state and local for fiscal recovery. It's three hundred and fifty billion dollars. Let's see, the local money is about a hundred and thirty billion, and the state money is going to be about two hundred and twenty. And then if you take the the local, the local money, that gets split between the entitlement metropolitan cities, the non-entitlement local governments and the counties. The entitlement metropolitan cities and the counties have, have received their monies, okay? They're still trying to define the non-entitlement communities and how that formula is going to work. You look at the state over on the other side of this graph, the state fiscal recovery, there's two hundred and nineteen point eight billion, and that gets divided amongst the states, territories, and the tribes. Go to the next slide. This is actually, this shows what Michigan is going to be getting. If you look at the, the. is going to be getting. If you look at the, the bottom part, um, the local fiscal recovery is a hundred and thirty thousand, I mean, a hundred and thirty billion. Different. It is going to be split amongst, uh, in Michigan, there are thirty entitlement metropolitan cities. And, uh, they've received their, they are going to be, uh, getting one point seven eight million dollars, billion dollars. And, uh, that goes without stipulation. They sent them the money already, and they can do with it as they please. The smaller communities, they're going to put some restrictions on, which really bugs me. We're a non-entitlement community, and in Michigan, that estimate is six hundred and eighty-six million dollars will be split up amongst, uh, the smaller communities. If you look at, uh, in the counties, uh, the counties are splitting the one point nine three billion. And, uh, whether you're entitlement or non-entitlement, that is figured out according to Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Formula, which I don't know how that works, but Renee probably does. She's done CDPG grants before. But it's the thirty largest communities in Michigan are the ones that are, are getting the blank se, blank checks, so to speak. And it's a direct payment from Treasury. The non-entitlement local governments, that's, would include, uh, all the cities in the U P. It's going to be allocated proportionally based on population. The state, uh, funding will first flow to the state, and the state will have thirty days to distribute to local governments. We're supposed to find out on May tenth. From federal treasury is supposed to come out with all the, the stipulations on how we, we can spend this money. Allocations to these local governments is capped at seventy-five percent of its most recent budget, so, uh, that'd be seven, um, and that brings about other questions, which I'll get on in, in the, uh, next slide. And, uh, the county's portion that, that they've received is, is, uh, based on the allocation, according to the county's relative population. Okay, for the smaller communities, like all the U P communities, allowable uses are, uh, here are the four, um, big lo, allowable uses, the response to public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, and affected industries. Provide premium pay for essential workers within caps. Provide government services to the extent of revenue lost. Or make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. I don't know where they came up with that infrastructure, but we're, we're, we'll find out on May tenth. Prohibited, you're prohibited from using funds for pension contributions. And our payments will come, uh, payments received in two payments. And the deadlines, we'll get one this year and one a year from now, and our deadline to, to, uh, spend the funds is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Okay, specific amounts that are going to be released. Our, Mr. Taylor said, um, there's a lot of numbers out there. I don't know if any of the commissioners had looked, but they, the, um, Congressional Oversight Committee posted numbers for every community in the United States. Um, he stressed that those numbers are inaccurate and do not go by them. There are some other formulas or, uh, figuring that the, the feds are gonna do before, uh, they determine the actual, uh, per capita, um, dollar amounts that we will get awarded. Bill, in the original estimate, villages were not included, but may receive distributions. Population data for non-entitlement communities can be selected by the state. So there's a lot of unknowns with the feds, and there's unknowns with the state also. And, uh, estimates for non-entitled communities, uh, do not include the ca, the cap on distributions, which is, uh, seventy-five percent of budget as of January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. So that brings about the, the question, calculation of seventy-five percent of budget cap. Is that your general fund or your total budget? Nobody knows the answer to that. And, uh, that's a big difference. Methodology for calculation of revenue losses, is it overall or by tax type? That's a question. Actual drop or compared to forecast? Lastly, uh, many other regulations, reporting, and restrictions. So, in the sixth page, um, you just stress a point where, you know, don't go by what's been posted on the internet. Um, go slow and be conservative with your estimates. Update or develop a, a strategic plan. We do have a strategic plan and a master plan. And the departments have their, uh, separate, uh, master plans for, uh, replacement of the, of, of their assets. Think long-term. The state plans to be deliberate in focused spending on transformational projects. Focus on financial stability. Best practice is to use one-time funding for one-time purposes. And he stressed, he said, you don't wanna go out and hire two new employees and, because you're creating long-term expenses. Be prepared to document and plan for future audits and plan for possible single audit. So this, we will, how we spend it and how we follow our plan will be audited. But the good news is, we're getting, we're going to get money. It's just disappointing that they throw money to some communities and they make us account for every single penny, which I think both sizes should have to account for, there should be the same rules for everybody. It's, it's just not.
So it was, going back to the date, May tenth, that's when we'll know how much we're getting? Maybe?
That was the date, on May tenth is the date of the big announcement, is what he said, so.
Okay.
I don't know if it's the rules or, or how, how to figure out, because once the feds make that, that, their list of how they, uh, interpreted their rules that they created, then the state still can determine how they figure out our population.
Yeah, that was one other question. He, did he elaborate, uh, at all on that? I don't know. Population data for non-entitlement communities can be selected by the state. I'm not exactly following that statement.
I don't know. See, we just had a census, and that's.
Right.
Whether they use the two thousand ten or the two thousand twenty numbers.
Is that what, okay.
Well, I know with some of the other funding and grants we get, there's different ways when you, where you figure out your affected population and so.
Did he give, did he give you any idea on a estimate about how much we might get?
He wouldn't.
He wouldn't even tell ya? Okay.
We, we tried, but he. He just said, don't believe what you read.
Okay.
Stress that. He said, just take it slow and, you know, plan out. So, um, we should, should know a, after the first, when is the first meeting in May?
May tenth.
May tenth. Well, that's the same day, so that, that night, so. I was thinking we'd probably wanna have a, um, set up a special meeting or a portion of the, the, the next second meeting in May where we sat down and discussed how we wanna.
We have a special meeting on the seventeenth?
Yeah, we have a special meeting on the seventeenth.
All ready?
We'd have until twenty twenty-four to spend it.
Yep.
See, water, wastewater, we're gonna list it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't put roads on there. Surprising and, um, have other infrastructure, like gas or electric or just water and wastewater, which are historically municipal, they own infrastructure to the other ones that are a lot of them are privately owned. Nope, that's all. I just wanted everybody to know, because the question keeps coming up.
Somebody, some, that's why I was asking. Somebody asked me last Friday, how much are we getting? I said, I don't, haven't heard.
So you see it in your account. Uh, next up, city managers' report.
Uh, Renee and I met with, uh, Del Fab last week. They have some ideas for some additional uses for parts of their building. We're working with them on that. They're still a little hamstrung on their, their past renter in the back part of that building. They had the, the two tenants, which have done the same thing to a couple other places in the county. They left a lot of, uh, solid waste that's not recyclable, and so they are putting the bill for getting rid of that, that stuff. There's, they have tons of it there that they have to, they've been hauling it themselves to the landfill, um, in a dump trailer as their, their funds allow them to, so. Luckily, it's not stuff that's going to deteriorate or rot or create a smell. It's all compacted mattresses and, uh, stuff like that. They have a lot of it. Met with them on that, and we're gonna try to help them find some, some money to help maybe get rid of some of that stuff. Tended a Eagle webinar with Rob, um, and regarding the annual consumer confidence report that the Water Department puts out. There's a number of changes, uh, in the old one I created back in the old days. Lot of new lead copper stuff, and, uh, the state is taking the leadership in, uh, the PFAS that everybody heard of last year. Kalamazoo area, which are the, from the fire retardants, will, uh, they're creating limits on that, and so that's gonna have to be included in, uh, consumer confidence report. And I found out that I am the city representative on the QPAD Regional Commission. I guess the Eskenaba City Manager and myself take turns. So I had, we had our first meeting last Friday. It's really informative, uh, the two topics that I, uh, was most interested in where the, there was, Enbridge was there, and they did an update on line five. And, uh, American, and then the American Rescue Plan, which I presented tonight. Enbridge has no, has no plans to shut down line five. They're going to. They were very matter-of-fact about that. That's all I have.
Thanks, Eric. Any city commissioner committee reports? Border commission reports? City commissioner comments? Commissioner Ackland?
This Friday is Arbor Day, so anybody interested in planting a tree, that would be a great thing to see happening in the city. Uh, that's all I have.
Mr. Stazinski?
A couple of things. Uh, I was sick a couple of weeks ago, so I missed our meeting with, uh, with Commissioner Hunter, uh, resigned. I would, uh, like to wish him the best in his new career. I'm sure he's watching us on YouTube as we're going viral.
With his popcorn.
Right. And, uh, I'd like to thank him for his service with the community. Yeah, I always appreciate his critical thinking and contributions he had to our discussions and, and his sense of humor as well. I wish him the best. This past week, uh, Ron Miaso had a, uh, excellent presentation to, uh, Delta Force on their, I believe it was their Economic Development Day. I don't know if anybody got to see that, but, uh, he did a great job. Uh, you know, a lot of it was focused on, uh, the improvements in the city and some of the opportunities for businesses that came about as, uh, through the efforts of the DDA. And, uh, you know, there were, there were various, uh, DDA representatives from around the county, and Gladstone's DDA is a shining star in Delta County. The, you know, his presentation was probably, you know, forty minutes, and others were, were five to ten. And it was, and it was all centered around, uh, successful businesses and, uh, you know, right here on Main Street and Delta Avenue and, and around town. And it, uh, it was, it was really positive, really good to see. And the DDA's done a, done a fabulous job. So over the past four or five years even, you look at, uh, you look at Main Street, and we have a parking problem. We used to have a lack of cars problem. It was, it was vacant, and so that's, that's really a good problem to have. And, uh, I'd like to thank the, the members of the DDA. They're all volunteers. You know, the time and effort they put in has really paid off for the city. Another thing I'd like to touch on, I touched on earlier, the, uh, donations for the K nine program. Sixty thousand dollars, and that's incredible for a city of five thousand people. I just, I don't know what to say about that. That's, you know what I mean? I mean, it was quite a bit. I thought it was forty thousand. You know, looking at the staff report and so on. It was fifty percent more than that. I mean, that's, that's twelve dollars a person. Right? Every man, woman, and child. I mean, that's, that's incredible. That speaks volumes about the, the citizens we have in this community. I'd like to thank them for that. The, and, and kinda on the heels of that, uh, D and D Dog Dynamics and Dave Johnson, like to congratulate them on a success of their business and the K nine training program they have. Uh, I think their presence on Delta Avenue has certainly been a, a positive, uh, thing for the city of Gladstone. You know, they've, they've brought people into town and, and they're, and they're bringing in more. And it, uh, they've done a great job there, so I'd like to thank them for that. And, uh, lastly, uh, public comment. Mike, I'd like to thank you for coming in and, uh, expressing your concerns and thoughts. You know, we certainly appreciate and, and encourage public input. It helps us do our job. So, th, thank you for taking the time to come in, and, uh, yeah, give me a call. We'll get together. You can buy me lunch, and, uh, you know, we can talk some numbers. That's all I have.
Commissioner Mantle?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
I don't have anything either. City clerk comments? That being said, the meeting is adjourned.